Okay.
Okay. Good evening. This is a call, the Willmet Public Library Board of Trustees meeting to order for January 19 at 6:01 PM. The notices have been distributed by the vehicles that were in your agenda. And trustee Barshis, can we have the roll call?
Certainly can. Trustee Barshis here. Trustee Fishman. Joan?
I'm muting here.
I wasn't looking away. Trustee Johnson? Not yet. Trustee Riddle?
Here.
Trustee Rogers?
Here.
Trustee Wolf?
Here.
Good. And trustee McDonald?
Here.
And Anthony, do you want to talk? We have several observers.
Yes, I do. I see a number of staff and some observers from the League of Women Voters Willmet. So from the staff, I'm seeing Marty Bellefontaine, John Risco, Jill McEwen, Kim Hagland, Rebecca Ranenokwin, Alice Joseph, Patsy DeVono. And we also have our three observers. I see Liz Seeger and Tracy Summer and Patricia Nealan. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you. At this time, it's the time for public comment. And anyone who would wish to address the Board of Trustees, this is your time to do so. Is there anyone that would like to address the Board of Trustees at this time? Okay, going once, twice. Moving right along. Behind tab number three, you've got the review of the draft of the minutes from November 17, 2020. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
I will motion to do so.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved by trustee Wolf and seconded by trustee Barshis to move and second the minutes from November 17, 2020. Is there any discussion? Or corrections at this point in time? Dean, can we have a roll call to approve the minutes?
Sure. Trustee Barshis, yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson, not here. Trustee Riddle?
Here.
Trustee Rogers?
Here.
Trustee Wolf?
Yes.
And trustee McDonald?
Yes. At this time, there are no presentations, so we will move to the treasures report. Trustee Rogers will be going over the financial reports for November, December, as well as the bills and salaries. Trustee Rogers?
Okay. November and December are generally low revenue months in terms of tax receipts. We received just over $15,000 in real estate taxes and 24,000, almost $24,000 in interest in November and December combined statements. And about $3,400 in personal property tax proceeds. So those are low revenue numbers, low revenue months. We are at 50% of our, I'm sorry, the we're 46% of the budget for the first six months through the end of December. There's nothing extraordinary in our checks. The two items that I'm going to move on separately is to approve first the November 2020 bills and salaries, which you have as an attachment in your materials. So I move that we approve the November 2020 bills and salaries.
I'll second.
Are there any questions about November detail?
Trustee Rogers has moved, trustee Wolf has seconded the approval of the November bills and salaries. Can we have a roll call vote?
Trustee Barshis, yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson, absent. Trustee Riddle? Yes, no?
She held her hand up. Say yes.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can now, thanks. Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Wolf?
Yes.
And trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Hey, I also will move approval of the December 2020 bills and salaries, which you also have as an attachment.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, trustee Rogers has moved the approval of the bills and salaries for December 2020. And trustee Wolf seconded. Is there any discussion or questions at this time?
I have a question. I noticed that this was, I think, the third, it might be the third month, like third consecutive report that we're hearing about the building supplies expense and it being higher than usual due to the, to the, you know, related COVID, I'm sure, P E, P P E, equipment. I was wondering if we needed to kind of revisit this line. And I mean, I'm sure this is going to be somewhat, would you consider this to be kind of a usual expense that we're going to have over the next, you know, year, 12 months or so?
I think what I would say, oh goodness, sorry about that feedback. I think what I would say about this expense is that we are doing our best to try to acquire P P E as it becomes available. Early in the pandemic, it was a challenge to find supplies. And so as our vendors have been able to provide us with the equipment, we've been ordering in advance in the event that there would be, you know, a shortage of those supplies somewhere down the road. So at this point, I think we have a substantial amount to get us through. And I, you know, we'll continue to purchase it as needed, but I think we have enough of the stores here presently. So I don't think that this is, I mean, I'm obviously monitoring this line. I don't think that we're going to nose up on spending that down completely. We have a couple of other lines that are adjacent to it that if we needed to, we'd be able to fall into. So if you, if you look at the progress on some of the other building lines, some of those may be able to help us out with supporting some of those expenses. But this one doesn't concern me at this time. I don't think we need to make an amendment to the budget for that line.
Good to know.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you for the explanation. And by no means am I saying, you know, we're, you know, kind of under or oversupplied. I appreciate the background.
You're muted, Lisa.
The backbeat. It's been moved by trustee Rogers and seconded by trustee Wolf to approve the December bills and salaries. Can we have a roll call, trustee Barshis?
Trustee Barshis, yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson, absent. Trustee Riddle?
Hi.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Wolf?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes, the motion passed six to zero. Having, being there are no action items, we will move to the discussion. And with Director Austin reviewing the updated pandemic response plan.
Thank you. Okay. I hope you all are prepared because I've got a lot to talk about tonight. So you're going to get to hear me a fair bit. So first of all, I want to make sure, can everyone hear me okay? Okay, okay. All right. So you may recall that the last time that we got together as a board, we were coming together to talk about our plans for potentially closing the library. And in fact, we needed to make a hard pivot to close the library last November in the days immediately preceding the board meeting due to the fact that there was a rise in the COVID metrics for our region, but also due to the fact that we had our first positive case on staff for staff inside the library. So there were a number of steps that we needed to take at that time when we made that pivot. As we're meeting here this evening, we're also, we're kind of on the other side of that now. Yesterday, the governor made an announcement that moved Region 10, which is suburban Cook County, into Tier 2, which means that we would meet the criteria that we would need in order to reopen the library. So there's going to be a number of things that we'll talk about related to this here in a moment. And I'm also going to soon introduce you to our circulation manager, Kim Hagland, who is joining us on the call here tonight. And she's going to talk about what our current service model is and the steps that we're taking going forward with relation to the circulation department. I want to give you a little bit more context before we get into that conversation to talk a little bit about the planning that we're making in order to reopen the building. This is not a topic that we take lightly, and it's been a topic of a lot of discussion here around the library today. So as you know, the metrics that we've been discussing have been satisfied. The governor has indicated that locally, the transmission rate of COVID or the positive tests are certainly below 10% and locally they're at about 5%. So that is good performance for our community. That shows that the measures that we're taking are effective. And the ICU bed count is back where it should be at about 20%. So with those criteria met, we can seriously consider what it would take in order to open the library. That said, we're also learning right now that there are new variants of the coronavirus that are making their way through this part of the country. And they're coming from all around the world. And apparently, the transmission rate with these are 50% greater than that of what we're seeing with the current virus that we've been battling to this date. So that certainly gives us some concern as we think about where we need to be. So the leadership team and I have been evaluating, as I said, some necessary steps that we need to take in the building in order to prepare the building for reopening. There are some building factors that we need to take, that we need to satisfy first. One of those steps is the relocation of our holds. For the first time in almost a year, when we reopen the library, we are planning to resume open holds, which means patrons will be able to come into the library as they were, say, back in February of 2020. And they can pick their own books off the shelf that had been set aside for them on hold. CCS as a, as our vendor is expecting us to do a new procedure for Willmet Library, although we are one of the last in CCS to do this for how we wrap our books in order to preserve patron identity. So we're taking this precaution in order to protect patron privacy as we're putting these materials out on the shelves. Now, we currently have more holds on the shelves than we have in the past. And that's because our service model has been oriented towards parking lot pickup. I'm going to try not to steal too much of Kim's thunder here because I'm sure she has a lot to say about that. But we need to allocate more shelving space than we have in the past. You may remember when you first walked in the library, immediately to your left by the circulation desk, you would see some shelves, and that's where you would pick up your holds. Well, currently, we're taking up maybe four or five times as many shelves as we had there previously. So we need to find a new location for those. In order to find a new location, I, we're kind of explaining this as like one of those little flat puzzles that has an open square. And then you have to move all the pieces around to make the puzzle. That's where we're at. The open square is the, is the piece that we're looking for. And some things have had to move around the library as a result. I'll get into that in a little bit here, but we're shifting a lot of collections. And we're preparing the building in a way that we have not quite done to date. So there are some things that we need to do with the building before we reopen it. So basically, what I'm saying at this point is that we are on track to open no earlier than February 1 at this point. We're going to need at least 10 days in order to do some of this work that we're preparing for. But there's also a number of other criteria that we need to look at too. But to zoom out and to look at library land, to kind of see what our peers are doing, you'll see that we're not the first to reopen, and we're certainly not going to be the last. Evanston Library is currently open. Glenview Library opened yesterday. Glenn Co Library is planning to reopen on Monday, the 25th. A few of our neighboring libraries up the shore are looking into February. February 8, I think, is what they're targeting in Highland Park and Lake Forest. There's even talks of much later, like pushing back into March, even though we're into Tier 2 now. The Vernon Area Library never opened after it closed a year ago. And Chicago Public has been basically open throughout the whole process. So there's no one size fits all. Each organization and community has their own criteria. And because our buildings are a big part of all of this, the way that buildings are designed has a lot to do with the influence of whether the library is prepared to reopen to the community or not. Drive up windows being one of those factors too. But as I said before, while we think we may be able to meet this February 1 date, this time around, it's a little bit different because there are other variables. Staff has been speaking with me a fair bit today with some of their concerns. And I wanted to share those concerns with you as this is criteria that I think we need to consider as we're making this decision for our community. So overall, staff have concerns that our current safety guidelines may not be enough to protect staff from the new strain. And a request to wait until health officials know more about what additional precautions may be necessary. As I said before, there's this new strain that has a 50% greater transmissibility, and we don't know much about it right now. One request from staff was that we would provide very specific kinds of masks. And that we need to make sure that we're getting them from an authentic source because a lot of the ones that are available elsewhere are counterfeit and may not actually be effective at containing the virus. There have been requests from staff to wait until the opportunity has at least passed for staff, particularly those over 65, have been partially vaccinated. The village has approached the county with a request to include all units of local government. I'm really impressed with the steps that Mike Bremen has taken on behalf of all units of local government in an effort to try to get libraries and parks, as well as the schools and village officials classified in the 1B or 1C category for the distribution of the vaccination. I currently don't have any information about the availability of the vaccine right now. But I do think that that is still some emerging information that may give some folks a bit more comfort as we adapt to this new normal. ILA and Rails have also taken to advocating and have been circulating documentation to help libraries make their own advocacy to their local counties. And Willmet Library has used that template in an effort to try to get listed a little bit earlier for our staff to get the vaccine. So we're trying to hit that from a number of angles, but the vaccine, I think, is a factor. There are still concerns from staff about the compliance that our patrons have with our guidelines. Even during the summer months, we found that not everyone was, was, you know, knowing how to wear their mask. And even, even through November, we had a lot of saggy masks and a lot of exposed noses and stuff like that. So as we're being told right now that we need to be using more of the N95 type masks or starting to wear filters and eliminate the use of the cloth masks, there is the concern that the public being in the building may not be able to use them, the masks appropriately. And there's also been some concern about this being the cold and flu season anyway, and that our staffing levels might not be able to sustain this. There's also concerns from a few staff who are older and fall into that category who are concerned about a reasonable accommodation for their work environment, which may mean that we may be a bit more stressed as we're trying to work in teams to keep everyone healthy and safe. We may not actually have the adequate staffing that we need in order to sustain operations as we've designed it. There's also concerns about where we're at locally in terms of the cases. And I've shared those tools with staff so that they know what metrics we're looking at. And as I, as I said earlier, locally, we seem to be doing better than other parts of suburban Cook County. So I feel a bit more comfort in that regard. But basically, given all the information that I've shared with you here this evening, I'm curious to hear where the board feels this evening, based upon what the governor's announcement was yesterday and our efforts to ramp up to reopening as early as February 1, but also in light of everything else that I've said here, where would you have us consider reopening the building for browsing? Knowing that when we reopen the building, we're effectively going to be offering the same services that we did last summer and fall, which is essentially the main difference between what we're offering currently via parking lot pickup is that you would be able to come in and browse the stacks. You'd be able to use computers for up to one hour. However, there are no in-person programming. There is no study rooms, no meeting room availability for lease. And the capacity limit of the building is at 50. And that we are asking all patrons to limit their time in the building to one hour. All right, trustees, what do you think?
I would suggest that as a first step, we should not reopen the building until we have better information about the availability of vaccines, particularly to any staff who meet the next grouping requirements of over 65. If the request from the village to include all of our staff in that, in that grouping works, then you're mainly dependent on the availability of vaccines. That may change significantly in the next four weeks. We don't know how all of that is going to play out. And so, and what, the only thing we know for sure is that the level of information that has been shared publicly about the availability of vaccines is incomplete. We don't know what's been left out. We don't know what the actual supplies are. And until some clarity is available to let us know exactly where that stands, I think it's premature to expose staff to risks that we don't have any way of measuring. And so I would suggest that February 1 is probably too soon. If everything fell in place perfectly, mid-February might be a feasible reopening time. But if it moved, if we didn't reopen in February, it's not catastrophic. The issue, quite frankly, is that we're maintaining a level of service that meets what we can safely deliver until we have a clearer picture of vaccination availability. And I think it's important to protect staff and other patrons until we have enough information to have a better sense of what's happening there. I'm much less concerned about the variant than I am about the availability of vaccines to protect staff and patrons under these circumstances.
Anthony, I just have a question. There is no way to demand that staff take the vaccine when it becomes available. Is that correct?
That is correct. A vaccine is elective.
And given that it's elective, and I think in terms of the, and I sort of differ from trustee Rogers in thinking that it's, given the measures that you've put in place, that there is never going to be any certainty as to when the vaccines are going to be available. And then when they do become available, you've got to get two doses, which means it's probably a three to four week when you get up to 90%, if that's in case true. Because I think with the first vaccine, it's only 50%. I think in terms of, there are no guarantees, whether it's cold or flu season. So I would open the library February 1 with those precautions that you are stating. I think there needs to be some way to enforce that the patrons wear a mask. And then perhaps with the staff, they probably need to double mask with a cloth and then put the N95, because that's what I was told when I go visit my mother in the memory care by social workers so that I don't catch it. But those are just my thoughts in terms of, because you've got 50%, they're in and out in an hour, there's no place to sit except in the computer room. And then you've got the shields there to keep them from getting it. Is there any concern that the books that they touch or the videos might spread it?
We're still quarantining all of our materials for three full days before check-in, so that, that process will continue.
But that, what I meant is if they touch it, is there any concern? When people browse, they touch the books, there's no way to quarantine those. That wasn't a concern as much before. Is there any new information for that to be a concern now?
There's no, no new information about that, but that is still, still a distinct possibility.
Other trustees?
Yeah, I'd like to just say that I would really be happy if the staff were comfortable. And I would wait until that moment, I think, before opening up. And I know that's a, that's a gradation. Some are more comfortable with some things and others are not. But I think it's not worth doing, since most of the things that people do in the library, they can do with the parking lot pickup, or at least the major part of it. So there isn't really an absolute necessity for people to come through the library until everyone feels as comfortable as possible with the situation. And we know from what happened before the library closed, and people were coming in and out. As you've pointed out, that lots of people didn't have the mask and they didn't have it on correct. And they were cranky when they were told that they needed to. And there are enough cranky people out there who are not following any kind of rules at all that, and they don't want to go to the library and be told again that they need to follow the rules. So we're still in the process, I think, of A, making the staff feel as comfortable as absolutely possible. And B, somehow, when the library opens, of making sure that whatever is required of people coming into the library is done in a safe way to the people who work at the library. So it's, and that's not easy.
If I may say, I think it's important to have a real, I, I I have, I've experienced this through some of my work at my local church. And I think it's important to have a real good conversation with those who feel anxious on staff level. Maybe you've already, maybe you've already done that. But what is it that they are anxious about? And, you know, I think that we have a risk exposure locally that is still pretty low. Yes, there's a variant, but the exposure in the area is not where, you know, the North Shore isn't the super spreaders here. And we have, and folks have exposure in much more public areas than the library. The grocery store, Costco. And so I think we really need to talk about what it is, or maybe they already can tell you what it is that they're uncomfortable with. I, I fear that we may, by, by waiting until a vaccination is available or everybody's maybe more comfortable, I fear that we're losing a little bit of, or missing the needs of younger families. There is some spontaneity in getting to, oh, to visit the library during the day with younger kids that aren't in school. And that's hard in making, making an appointment to pick up sometimes. I've missed mine many times, and I have to wait, you know, additional, additional time for my next appointment. So I'm, I'm just saying, I think that we might be kind of, I appreciate, and I have parents also that I'm very cautious for. I'm living my life cautiously for my parents. And I appreciate that we have folks that are, you know, in, in the category of being, you know, immune compromised and, and vulnerable. But I really think we, you have the, you have the guidance and guidelines in place at the library to really minimize patron exposure. And we miss the library. Young families miss the library. If we were to wait, I would really want to know, like, like, why, you know, why are, why are we waiting for? Is it because of a strong group of, of people, I mean, a group of people that have just a strong opinion about it? Or is it really kind of a wider felt sentiment among the staff?
I have a question. Somehow I missed, is it still the, the minimum or rather the maximum of 50 patrons in the, in the library at one time? Okay. Be some point, could, you know, and along that thing be some lower, would that minimize, you know, stick risk if the number of people one time is even doable or make any difference? But I don't know if that would help.
We've certainly
There's little or no
Yeah, sorry. You're, you're breaking up a little bit. I don't, maybe your connection's a little weak. I did
I'm having a bad, a bad connection today. I think it's on my end. Maybe should I go into, try my chin?
Or just even turn off your video, turn off your video, Joan, and that might give you, then you just have the audio signal versus the video signal.
Okay, thank you, Stuart. Is that better?
It is.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, I mean, I can, I can speak to your point, Joan. I mean, could we lower the capacity of the library? So, yeah, I mean, I can, I can speak to your point, Joan. I mean, could we lower the capacity of the library? We could. We, we didn't really get to the 50 last fall. I mean, there were a few times where we got pretty close. And essentially what happens is then we have people waiting outside. And if winter months, it's maybe, you know, less desirable to set up a scenario like that. And I, I think we're probably going to get some pushback from folks who are going to say, look, that's a big building, you know, let us come in. Let us just stand in the vestibule. Well, that's certainly not a safe place for us to congregate either. There's a lot of congestion with the, the way the building is laid out. So I think the capacity is pretty much where I would leave it. I don't know if it's so much of that. So, yeah, I don't, I don't know that that necessarily be the
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'll just say one other thing. I was just gonna also just piggyback on that idea. Would appointments, in-person appointments make a difference for the staff? That can really control, you know, numbers and, and stuff. So in-person browsing appointments for a family like, you know, like myself or something.
That was certainly part of, you know, appointment-based browsing was certainly a model that was considered early on. And there were some of our peer libraries had experienced that as well. You know, to, to your point earlier, Fina, I mean, appointments don't always work for everyone and, and, and life situations can change and, and make it hard for us to sustain appointments. So I think, you know, that it's working for the parking lot model on a reasonable basis, but I'm not confident that that would be the, the model or expectation that our public would have of an open building. I think that would be a harder model for us to sustain and to try to manage. It's, it's a lot to try to coordinate this effort right now for parking lot pickup, let alone to try to coordinate that for everyone coming into the building. So I would, I would like to maybe keep that way on the back burner.
Anthony, obviously, as we've, I've, I've been very appreciative of all the different opinions that the trustees have shared and as you as well, obviously. And yes, and I agree with the other trustees to say the most important thing is what we do to keep our staff safe and our patrons safe. And just like you described before, the puzzle of trying to move that little piece around to accommodate everything. It's like, this is like trying to put a round peg in a square hole. Is there any way, if you analyze the possibility of doing some kind of a hybrid? I know certain grocery stores have senior shopping like in the first hour of the morning. I, I was thinking, could we possibly cut the hours in half that the library is actually physically open? And then you'd have an hour or two that are available for, you know, young families like Fina mentioned, or, you know, or, because I also know there are people that have all different ages and demographics that are, you know, interested in getting back into the library, but also understanding we have to keep that safety first and foremost. So my question is, said we might even have more people pile in for timeframe. But again, if there's a way to segment out the day, does that accommodate what, what trustee Riddle talked about? And at the same time, keep the library and patrons safe? Is there a way that that's manageable? Or is that just, is that more complicated?
I would say it's definitely more complicated. We had toyed with that notion as well of, of having early hours of browsing for our most vulnerable patrons. And I know that some of our, our neighboring libraries are, are doing that. I, I can't, I, I don't have the numbers in front of me to quote our demographics, but we have a little bit of an inverted bell in terms of our community demographics. So the, the two groups you're describing, I think, pretty closely match what our community is right now. So I, I don't know that it would necessarily work in, in this environment, you know. But I think if we were to do something like that, it would take a lot of coordination and planning. And I don't know that I could pull the trigger on that one as soon as February 1 and get together a salable plan that would, and a communication plan for the community in, in advance to meet that February 1 deadline. But it's certainly something that we could consider if that, if that were the will of the board and to try to move this forward. But I think we could certainly move forward with February 1. You know, if that, if that is, if that's what you all would like to support, we can also go on a tentative basis. There, there are a lot of ways that we can approach this. I know I'm not making this easy for you, for you to consider, but
It's important to discuss. Trustee Riddle asked the question, is there any sense from you what the staff consensus is in terms of what they would feel is most comfortable? You know, and, and again, when I was thinking of the hybrid opening, you know, if there are certain staff that are comfortable with dealing with patrons, they could be there during the open hours and then other staff could be there in the hours where the library closed, which I know is probably even more complicated. But just in general, what kind of consensus do you get a sense of, or do you have of the staff and yourself?
Yeah, I, I mean, for me, February 1 feels, it, it feels doable. I think, I think we're driving an aggressive deadline to hit that, and I think that we could realistically hit that deadline. We got a lot of communications to roll out and we've got, as we're about to talk about, a lot of other things that are in motion right now. And I want to give some more context to this conversation as well that I think is going to be helpful. So I might ask you to kind of consider this as we, as we get to Kim here, because I want Kim to talk a little bit about what we're doing currently. I also want to, want to just kind of move forward for one second and mention in my circulation statistics report for you, which you don't have the benefit of the, of the longitudinal study. We are up actually in circulation for the first time in this pandemic year. Our November and December statistics were up 2% over 2019. So it's not for lack of our library meeting demand. In fact, I think we are quite rather exceeding demand in terms of our, our able to, our ability to fulfill what patrons are looking for. Part of that is due in part to our interlibrary loan services meeting demand. Our, our hold system seems to be working well and the appointment-based, by and large, is working really well for most folks. So I, I don't think that we're falling down in terms of the services that we're offering. It's really just scaling this up. In terms of the concerns that staff have, I think all of those are legitimate concerns and they're not so much oriented towards the individual. I think we're trying to, we're, we're thinking as a community. So, you know, as, when we, when you talk about the concerns of the staff, it isn't a selfish concern, like I'm looking out for my own individual health, although that's a very real thing. We are looking out to try to preserve the health of our community. So I, I think if, if it's okay with you, I, I would like to kind of pause this conversation, give you guys a chance to think about this a little bit more. And then I'd like to, I'd like to introduce Kim and, and give her an opportunity to tell us a little bit about what we are doing. Talk a little bit about our successes and how we're planning to move forward with the next pieces of our operation. So Kim has joined us. She's been with us for just three months now and a very busy three months it has been. So Kim Hegland, circulation manager, take it away.
Good evening, everyone. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Just wanted to confirm. My name is Kim Hegland. I appreciate you taking the time to allow me to speak to the board this evening. I, as Anthony mentioned, I've been here three months. I've been in libraries just five years. I started as the assistant circulation manager at the Evanston Public Library. So just a hop, skip and a jump over. I am currently in library school, so I'm trying to get my master's in library science. I'm very excited about that. And a little bit of just background about myself. I was a retail store manager, so I have the knowledge of customer service, being able to see and implement things in multitask. So those are what we're doing right now so efficiently with such a smaller staff. It is amazing what this library does. And I'm very excited to be here and during this time. It was hard to transfer during a pandemic, but this, I've loved every minute of me working with the staff and the leadership team. It is such a welcoming both community and every individual who works here. So I'm so happy to be here and speak. I'm going to kind of just lay out my conversation with you, so please feel free to ask questions. Those who haven't done parking lot pickup or have questions about new methods that we're looking at or what our peers are doing, please let me know. So basically, our current service model is we take during the week 163 parking lot pickup appointments. That does not include if you are picking up for multiple people in your household, if you have a significant other or children. So those are appointments that we are making on a daily basis. We've also included multiple pickups for both our teen kits for, right now they're doing bath bombs as well as our Cyberfoam kids programs that we have. So those are all appointments that patrons are able to make for pickup. We bag everything the day before. So we're pulling the lists. We're roughly about 36 hours booked in advance. So today around about 2 o'clock, we still had appointments for tomorrow. So we're, we're starting to get to the point where we didn't feel at the end of December, January, if you were trying to make an appointment because of the closures, we are now at the point where you can still get an appointment the next day. So those are still available to you. Our staff is currently still making library cards. We get the applications online and verify information to our patrons. So we contact them and we'll either give them the ability to just use an e-card or we can mail the card to them and they can start to place holds immediately and do parking lot pickup when they receive their notifications. We check out and pull daily quite a few holds. Yesterday, we, we emailed called 989 patrons to pick up holds. So the ILL department is happen. They're amazing. Today, when I left the pick list, which is all the patron requests from the whole entire consortium, was roughly under 100. So we are almost at a 24-hour turnaround because a patron can place a hold at 1 o'clock and we might pick it at 5 o'clock. So we're doing efficient work daily. And we're trying to do our best when we see those holds come onto our shelves. If a patron has an appointment that day, we're looking to bag those immediately too. That's our basic parking lot pickup. Right now, we're looking if it is decided we will be opening. Anytime in the near future, we will be going to open holds. And as Anthony mentioned, the open holds will be in our new arrivals area and patrons will be able to take their books immediately, take it to the self-checkout or to the staff member to, to check out. Or if they have children, would like to go up to the children's department, they can use the self-checkouts up there. So open holds, I, Evanston had not changed to open holds when they reopened in July. So I ended up spearheading that program in educating the patrons on how to find their holds. Because for privacy reasons, we cannot leave the whole name more than four letters of your last name. So my hold would say H-E-G-E-K, and then my middle initial M on the hold wrapper. We will have communication out to patrons on how to read it. So that way, if someone happens to have a common name, that middle name is very identifiable as well as the last four digits of your library card will be on the hold. So we'll have a staff member in the open holds area directing people how to grab their holds. Because this will be new. It no longer has their full last name. So Hegland would not be there. It also prevents a patron from kind of browsing the hold shelf because the books will be, you won't be able to see exactly what the book is. It'll be the stomach of the book that you'll see. It's been effective at many libraries across the consortium. I have spoken with my peers to see how they are doing as well as experiencing at another library. Once patrons get an idea of how the open holds work, it, it's seamless. They grab, they know what they need to do and they typically will be in and out with the self-checkouts that we have or with a staff member. I know in the director report, it kind of expressed how many people we're running with. We usually schedule between five to eight people a day. So those five to eight people are doing parking lot pickup, the pick list, checking in materials for patrons that return, as well as answering the phone calls and making bags the next day. So there is not a wasted moment in the circulation department. We have other departments helping us pull books for patrons. Our book bundles have been very successful. Adult Services Jill's department did a cookbook during December and that was amazing. We saw those come flying. Andrea, I know I don't see her on the call, but the children's department also did a let me shop the books for you book bundles. And those were very successful. Those came down daily to the department. And it was great to see the kids and see what the staff picked out for those patrons. So our hold level, we had 12,000 and some change placed over the month of December, which is an increase from November. Our patrons are a reading community and we're fulfilling their needs. As Anthony mentioned, statistics are still up and we're still able to keep up with our consortium and the demand from our other libraries. I'm here for, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them or whatever, if I wasn't clear on a specific point.
Kim, welcome. And one question. I know that sometimes there are complaints among the patrons that they've got to wait 36 hours or 24. What have been some ways that you have sort of calmed them down in terms of set their expectations and any regarding communication, just to sort of let them know what the service level is? And the reason for why it takes 36 hours or 24?
Yes, thank you for that question. So I think one of the things that's not understood is what all encompasses circulation. They see the staff behind the glass and there's, happens to just be two people. Those staff members are pulling and shelving all of the holds that come up. They have two people in the basement checking in over 1,400 pieces of material every day and transferring them or getting them up to Patsy in the shelving department so that they can get back on the shelf. I have one person answering the phone calls and I have two people pulling all the requests for patrons. I think when we explain how many people can actually be in the department and we have to be socially distanced. I, it may not necessarily be there, but in November, when we did close for a staff member testing positive, it was in the circulation department. So the staff is very cautious of how practicing social distance, six feet, making sure that everyone is comfortable and setting, and we have set up boundaries with each other where we're comfortable because we don't want to go through what we did in November again. So we're, that would be the main thing that I tell patrons. One, we're social distancing. We run between five to seven people. And I understand your concern. Is there anything else that I can transfer you to another department? So in case you want more materials, they can pull some for you so you don't have to wait that additional time. I think those are the key things that once a patron understands what all we do, they kind of step back a little bit.
There were two individuals that did end up getting kicked up to me who were concerned about not being able to get, you know, their material the same day that they had placed the request. And for those individuals, I did offer to personally deliver those items to them. And upon learning that I would be willing to offer that service to them, they said, oh, it's not that important. I'll just wait until the next day to get my material. We are looking to try to expand our delivery services and I'll talk more about that later. That could be an option for a little bit more for service delivery. But, you know, even for those that we've offered it to, it, it hasn't been such a priority for those folks. By and large, the response has been very positive. And folks do understand when they, when they do get a little bit more explanation about what, what it looks like behind the scenes. Kim has kind of explained this, and I love her analogy. We talk about this as a duck on water. On the surface, it looks really calm, but underneath, we're working like crazy to keep this thing afloat. And that's kind of, that's a really good analogy.
Isn't there a way to do more behind the scenes? Just a, just a video or just some type of communication to let the patrons know what it takes? Just an article as to what it takes to get your book? And, you know, in terms of how many are going per day, just do a one-day infographic? Because I think it would be helpful for them to know what's involved. And I think that might, in terms of communication, to let them know exactly what's going on behind the scenes. Because you've got perceptions that not a lot of work is being done, but I think that would be a good way to tell that. And then the other question I've got is, what have some of the other libraries done to reassure their staff that have gone opening, that have gone on and opened? What are some of the techniques? Because I'm sure they have similar profiles in terms of age. Maybe, maybe not. That's an assumption.
Yeah, I can't speak to that, that detail. It, this, this particular instance is pretty fresh. So, you know, I think obviously we're going to have to make some accommodations here and there. But, you know, we need to, we need to ensure that we're following all of our, all of our protocols, which again, we're, we're masked up constantly and we're keeping our distance from one another. We're doing our best to work in teams. We have our daily health screening that all employees need to do before they come into the building to verify that they do not have any symptoms and that they meet all the criteria to be able to be released to work. And, you know, so those are all the steps that we need to be following. And it's true. I mean, if one person were to fall off a team, it, it could be very impactful. We're a pretty lean unit and we always have been. And this year, we've experienced some shrinkage on our team as a result of some turnover. And we've had some, some important retirements as well. So despite So despite all those things, we are afloat, but it is, it's still a very sensitive operation to try to keep things at the level that they are at the moment.
I have just a detailed question for Kim. Are you changing the information desks at all? So people don't get right up on the person behind the desk?
So we, we used to run with three staff members at the desk prior to November. One of the couple of things that we did to kind of alleviate the, if you've been inside the library, when you come in, patrons happen to usually stand right in front of the hot pick section to wait for a patron or wait for an open staff member. So we've kind of re-shifted where the line goes. It's kind of leads into the reference in reader services department. We put up a stanchion sort of sign there and we also removed the interior book drop that was right by one of the stations. So someone coming into the library, dropping books didn't interfere with someone checking out with another staff member. When we reopen, we'll look at adjusting where those book drops for the inside will be. And we will only have two staff members behind the information desk, one at the ADA station and one in the middle. So that way patrons can socially distance. We've seen families of four or five come in and they'll huddle by that station. So we want to make sure that they're able to be safely distanced from the other person who's at the ADA station. And then we'll have the signage specifying and we don't see a lot of the stepping behind the plexiglass. We see a lot of the pulling down of the masks to talk to us because of the plexiglass. So that's our biggest one that we see at the circulation desk is that means a conversation of can you please pull your mask back up? So I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you and welcome to Willmatt. I know that you're going to be really great. You have already done some wonderful things.
Thank you.
I was, I think I'm guilty of the last, of the last one, Kim. I found that I had to scream and because I wasn't maybe enunciating as well, I dropped my mask. So, but thank you so much for that. I, I really appreciate all the, all the background. And I don't know if you, while you were speaking, I don't know if any of you have been to Shack or Share in Willmatt. They are local, a family-owned store and they have decided to mainly sell online because during the pandemic and after a while, they decided to open only certain days of the week. So I don't know if that might be something, I know you've probably thought it out, Anthony and Kim, but I, we miss the library, you know, less, I think in, to go around and browse for an hour, that's way more than I've ever, even since, you know, when it reopened in the summer, that's way more than I ever needed and used it for. But I did come in with my three kids, which probably can be, you know, social, it can, it can look and appear to staff that we're not socially distanced. But the kids picking out a book, we really miss it, you know, and I think we would spend maybe at the most 15 to 20 minutes there. I don't know if you'd consider maybe opening the, having certain days that the libraries open, continuing, you know, the online offering, you know, the online, the ability to hold online and check out online, but have Tuesdays and Saturdays be open. I don't know if the staff would feel comfortable with that, with that level of, and visitation may be reduced to 20 minutes rather than 50 or an hour. Is it 50 or an hour? That, that's just all I.
I, I think my concern with, with that model would be that we would be clustering more people into a tighter timeframe. In fact, what we're, what we're planning to do when we do reopen is to expand hours on Saturday. So we're currently open 10 to six, Monday through Friday for service. And even, even in this kind of pseudo-remote environment, and then Saturdays, we're open 10 to 3. We're looking to open till 5:00 PM on Saturdays as our first step upon reopening because we know from our survey last fall that folks wanted additional hours on Saturdays. So that'll pretty much get us back to our regular hours on Saturdays. So I mean, I, I think if we were to, if we were to further limit the number of days, honestly, I think that might, that might make things even more challenging. So at this point, I guess, you know, based upon what you all have heard about what our current service model is, what our current circulation statistics are, what our plans are for the future, and given the environment that we are in, do you have any further advice to the library leadership about what we should do regarding reopening?
I do think that it's extremely important to give ourselves the time to see what can evolve with actual leadership going on in both vaccination distribution and a nation, an effort to build a nationally coordinated plan on coping with the pandemic. We have not had either of those under any kind of reasonable control up to now. And in the next few weeks, I think you're going to begin to see movement in that direction. That brings us right up to February 1st. And I think a week or two beyond that as a target for opening would make a great deal of sense. Once we do reopen, I think it's important to spread the volume of traffic for people who want to come into the library over as many days as possible so that it doesn't get concentrated in any way that makes things more difficult or more uncomfortable. So you know, I really do think that in a very short period of time, we're going to see a complete change of leadership. And that's, that's important to keep in mind as, as different information becomes available. We may be able to respond to this with a lot better knowledge of what, what's feasible and what isn't.
And I disagree with Ron. I think the February 1st target, if there are no more, you know, if Illinois stays in phase two, to go on and open it, because I think states right now are all doing their own thing. And it's nice to think that things are going to change in two weeks, but I would not work on that. And I think you've got lots of precautions that you've taken in the past and you all are working on it now to make some more precautions. So that's my thing. So I think you've got some trustees with some different opinions that you might want to hear from. Or as you've done in the past, you did it based on what the situation was and you use your own judgment because we never voted on it. So you've got a lot of different opinions to go with.
Anyone else like to contribute to that?
This Joan, I hope I don't break, my internet doesn't break up. I, I tend to agree or you know, lean towards using your, you know, you have the best judgment, but I, I just think that, you know, pushback from the community is, is always on our minds. Safety is always on our minds and just meeting the, you know, meeting in the middle. And it's kind of neither here nor there perhaps, but I, I think that, I think getting open and particularly when patrons see local, other libraries from Evanston or local communities, that's where I think the pushback comes from. And I, I don't mean to say that we don't follow best practices and staff safety is of utmost, but I think I feel at times very sensitive to what the community has to say, particularly when they see what's going on in neighboring communities. So I'm for, I guess I would say I'm for that February 1st or thereabouts and trying to move forward with that.
Does anyone else have anything else they want to add before we move over to the library RFP project updates? Correct, Austin. Thanks, Kim.
All right. Thank you so much for discussing. We're going to be on a, we're going to target our, our February 1 and we'll keep you posted about our plans as we make progress towards that goal. Okay. So this is a very busy time at the library beyond the pandemic. We've got a lot of projects coming up within this year. So I wanted to give you an update on the work that we're doing there. So the RFID project, as you may recall, we have an agreement with Biblioteca to begin that project. And we are expecting our first delivery of the Biblioteca RFID equipment this week. We were certainly hoping to receive our equipment before now. As you may recall, we entered into an agreement with Biblioteca in November. So I understand that there were some supply chain issues that held up some parts that were part of the equipment that we had ordered. And so that is what the delay has been. However, that project is going to be getting underway here shortly. So the methodology for this project is as follows. As soon as the equipment starts to arrive, we are going to be installing the tagging equipment in the technical services department, which is where all of our materials begin their lives at the library. So that, at the point at which we're processing all new material, putting barcodes in them, getting the stickers on them and so on, that is the point at which we're going to start our tagging process. So all new material will get tagged. And once we are up and running and that department is trained, we will then shift our training over to the circulation department and begin phase two, which is the tagging of all material that has been returned to the library. So the most popular materials, the items that have most recently circulated and are most likely to go back out into people's hands, we're going to get those tagged next before they go back on the shelves. And then phase three is the biggest phase of the whole system. And that is the in the stacks tagging. That's the deep part of the collection. We're expecting to receive this week, our first delivery, and that is of the, the tagging carts that are going to help with phase three. So of course, you know, the stuff that I want last is the stuff that arrives first. But anyway, the tagging carts are going to arrive and then these are our little mobile carts that are about the size of a book cart, a small desk. And they have a computer built into them as well as a scanner and a little printer that spits out the RFID tag. And what's going to happen is these carts are going to travel around throughout the library. There's one for each floor of the collections. And we'll be tagging in the stacks as, as soon as we get the other phases of this project underway and the training completed. So we're still on target to complete this project before the summer. That is our goal. We think that once we get started in the stacks, it's probably going to take about three months to get through, you know, somewhere between 300 and 350,000 materials. The staff, as you know, continues to be assessing our collection for condition and to weed the materials that are no longer needed and so that we're only installing tags in the items that we need most. So that's a project that is continuing as we speak. So that's the, that's the RFID project and I will keep you posted on any, any updates that we have about that as we move forward. Any questions about RFID? So in an effort to facilitate, oh, Lisa, yeah, go ahead.
Question, do you have any delivery date for those self-check units, those self-checkout units, which will sort of minimize contact with staff?
That was the idea. That's certainly what we were hoping to receive by now, but that is apparently the part that is coming from overseas that is missing, belongs in that equipment. So that is what we've been waiting on. And I don't have any update on that, on that information at this time, but I will be sure to let you all know when I do. We certainly want to get those self-checkout stations installed and scattered throughout the library. That'll really help the compression that we have at the circulation desk. You may recall last year, we did purchase two Biblioteca self-checkout machines at the beginning of the pandemic before we even brokered an agreement with Biblioteca. And those two self-checkout stations are, one is in youth services currently. So there's two checkout stations up there. And then we have one of the old ones still in its original location across from the circulation desk. And one of the new Biblioteca stations is across from the recent arrivals area. We've recently put some data into the floor in front of the recent arrivals area where we're going to be relocating the open holds. And we're going to put, we're going to probably relocate that self-checkout station, one of the newer ones into that space to help facilitate checkout of the hold material. That's all going to be part of the communications that will be going out here as soon as we can regarding the new open holds model. So we'll get some pictures together and we'll help to illustrate it and walk folks through what the steps are for using that equipment here in the coming week. Any other questions about RFID? Okay. The next project is kind of in motion and we've received all of our bids and that is our audit services RFP. So through the month of November and early part of December, finance manager John Risco and I prepared a request for proposals for audit services. As you know, we've been with Sickich now for about 10 years or so. And it was time for us to reevaluate our audit services and to try to diversify and get some separate eyes on our finances. So we went out to bid and we received six proposals from some great firms that are familiar with library districts and small government. And we have reviewed that information and we are ready to make a presentation to the finance committee. Yesterday I sent around a doodle poll to see what your availability is as the finance committee and trustees to attend that meeting so that we can discuss the audit services proposal and our recommendation as well as to explore the finance policy that we have in motion as well. So if you haven't already filled out that doodle poll of your availability, please do. And we'd like to get that meeting on the books so that we can present this information to you. We're, we're really satisfied with the response that we got and I think we've got a good recommendation for you all, but I'm not going to tell you now. All right. The next update is the R, the RFP for our website redesign. So beginning in November and December, digital services manager Stephen Kobel and I were meeting to discuss the content for our, our website redesign process. Stephen also got together with our committee. We're working with a cross-departmental team that is currently evaluating our present website, making recommendations for improvement. As you know, we've been relying an awful lot on our website this last year and we've been able to discover a lot of what the weaknesses are as we've been pivoting. So we've got a long list of things that we know that we want for our new website and a lot of great sites that we can compare to so that our new consultants will have some guidelines as they design the new site for us. We just posted this RFP for the website redesign today on our website. And if you go to about us, you can see a listing of all of the RFPs, including past ones at about us and then request for proposals. There are currently two open projects that are listed there and they are the website redesign that was posted today as well as the first of two bid cycles for the 2021 capital repairs project, which is going to be set up in two different bid cycles. So before I move forward and talk more about the capital reserve project, I was curious if you had any questions about the website redesign. Our goal is to present the results of the website redesign and a recommendation for a firm that we can contract with at the March meeting. So we've got, we've, we've given a wide window for that response time and then we're going to be obviously doing a review and interview of those candidates before we make that presentation to you in March. So stay tuned for more info on that one.
I know you're working with the staff and you all are looking at different areas for the website. Are you doing any user experience in the interim before you work on that with patrons?
Definitely. We plan to have a UX portion be, as part of the redesign process, we'll work in focus groups. We have a number of what we call personas. So we set up, I think, between six and 10 individual types with specific type of information that they're looking for and behavior and how they would search the website. And we apply those personas. So those are, those are some mock environments that we can use in the meantime. And then when we're getting close to the testing phase, we'll be able to actually involve real, real patrons who can volunteer to help us with this process. We will, we will likely need to advertise this as we're still going to be in the pandemic. In the good old days, we would just kind of sit up in, in the lobby and invite people to come by and try the website in its, you know, in its temporary format. But we'll, we will certainly be doing UX as a part of this and going forward. And in fact, one of the members of our, our website committee has actually some educational background in leading user experience design. So we're really excited to have his expertise on the team. That's John Amundson in our adult services department. All right. So anything else about the website before I move on to the capital stuff?
Will the app stay the same or will there be any changes to the app based on the website change in terms of it mirroring some of the things that the? Will the app stay the same or will there be any changes to the app based on the website change in terms of it mirroring some of the things at the website?
Right, so the library does have an app. The app's vendor is Communico, and Communico is also the vendor for the library's web calendar. So when you book an event at the library or you register to participate in one of our Zoom meetings, all of that is done through the Communico platform. That is also the platform that we use for doing a booking at parking lot pickup. The Communico app is independent of the library's website. The Communico app, you know, is already engineered to, as an app, to display on a small device. One of the criteria of the new website is that it will have a responsive design, which means it will adapt to the size of the device that you're viewing it on. So we will, the website will maybe perform better. And some people who are using the app currently may find that they want to stay with the app, or they might find that the website is more responsive on their device and they might shift back to using just the website. So yes, that is responsiveness is definitely one of the criteria of that page. Okay. Capital Projects, all right, so you've got a lot of information in your packet about the capital projects, but I want to give you a little bit of an overview. So when we met back in August of last year with our consultant from Ingberg Anderson, Joe Huberty, he did a presentation about our Capital Reserve Study. And at that time, we received a report, and I included a portion of that report in the board packet and then also have referenced that to you in a number of separate emails that we've been talking about related to this project. That really set the stage for the work that we knew that needed to be done this year. So essentially, what the Capital Reserve Study did was it took a comprehensive roof-to-basement study of the entire building, building envelope and all the contents of it for any fixed assets inside the building. So everything from the roof to the electrical system was evaluated. The conditions were assessed and recommendations were made based upon the studies that we conducted. Now, a number of issues were identified as systems that were wearing, that were already past their prime or were not in compliance with code. Those were the priority items that were identified back in August. And there was an estimate that was set on those, and there's a document in your packet that shows that this is in fact the busiest year for us in terms of catch-up with a lot of our capital maintenance-type projects. And that is in fact the work that we gave the go-ahead for Joe and Shales McNutt, our construction management firm, to put together a bid set for and to develop drawings to complete all of this work for us this year. So what we are looking at is a series of projects that range from the top of the building, from the roof. This library has approximately 11 roofs, eight of which are in, you know, wearing or poor condition and need to be updated. I provided a document to you in your packet that talks a little bit more about the philosophy of the response that we're taking with regards to the roof because we did kind of oscillate in terms of terms, whether we were talking about replacement or repair. At this time, I'm not going to go into a lot of depth about this, but the conceptual idea that we have guiding this project is that we are opting to repair the roof at this time to recoat the roof and not replace it. This will renew the warranties that we have on the roofs and will get us at least another 10 years of life, if not more. We know that in 10 years' time, we will also be reaching the sunset period for the roof, the rooftop HVAC units, in particular the cooling towers and so on. Some pretty intense equipment that's on the roof that will need to be replaced. As I said in that report, if we wanted to replace the roof, we would need to hire a crane to take all of those units off the roof, to replace the roof, then put all that old equipment back on top of the roof. When I was talking about it with the consultants, I suggested that maybe we should just wait to replace the roof until we need to replace the rooftop units in any way, that there's an economy of scale in terms of the savings, and it seems that the timing would sync up. And that's what that document that's attached to your report from Ingberg Anderson kind of explains the rationale behind all of that. So that's the roof. We're also doing complete building envelope tuck pointing. This is the first time that we have done a comprehensive tuck pointing of the building in many years, probably within this century. So that is going to be a fairly involved process that will take probably at least 10 weeks to complete. That also involves sealant work. So we've already begun some of this process on the west curtain wall of the building when we were dealing with the water infiltration issue there. We've talked about that previously. There's a lot of caulking work that needed to be updated around the building, and that's the sealant work that we're talking about here. That's part of the scope. We've already talked about the parking lot paver repair work, and that was a contract that we initiated in the middle of last fall. That work is slated to begin when the library is going to be closed in August. So I'll get to that here in a little bit when I talk about the electrical detail. The water infiltration is a persistent issue at the library. So we addressed the curtain wall at the main entrance. We replaced the mullions there. We cleaned out all the weeps. We infilled and replaced a lot of the caulking and made sure that that system is performing the way it was designed. So that work has been done. The lower level continues to be a persistent issue, and we think we have finally discovered what the root cause of all the water issues are in the 640s. So what we're proposing to do here is to, this is a very invasive project. So this is in the 640s of the lower level, which is along the south portion of the building along Wilmett Avenue. So if you're standing on the first floor of the building, for example, if you're in the teen room or in the fiction room, it's what's immediately below you, just to kind of give you a reference. So what we're going to need to do in that area is we're going to have to take the collections off the wall in order to pull the walls back, address, address the foundation. We're going to have to put in a barrier in there between the drywall and the foundation to wick the water away from the building itself. And we're installing a drain tile system beneath this all to capture the water and to go into an existing drain tile piping system that's underneath the building that goes out to the sewer. So it'll go into the same roof drain system that we have from the top of the roof. All right, so this is going to be a fairly involved process to complete. So approximately, I think, I can't remember the number off the top of my head, but hundreds of shelves of material will need to be removed from the wall. The walls will need to be removed from the wall. We will then put that, that's, that Tyvek-type system against the concrete. We will tear away concrete from the floor and install the drain tile system. Then we'll replace the carpeting, put the walls back on, put the shelving back on, and put the books back on the shelves. This is going to be a several-week process, and it is slated to begin in April after the thaw. The library will likely be open while this whole project goes on. In an effort to try to protect the collections during this whole process, we'll need to put Masonite up against the other bookshelves that are not already impacted by this project, and then we'll put up a Visqueen plastic barrier around all those stacks to protect the collections. But that will mean that browsing of these collections will not be available during that time when this project is going on. In fact, for safety purposes, we'll probably have to wall off a portion of this area and keep the public out of that space for safety. That doesn't necessarily mean that the collections are going to be completely out of availability to the public, but if you need those cookbooks, because that's really the area that we're talking about, we may need to find an alternate means to deliver those books to you, and you may need to wait just a little bit longer to get them. That's probably one of the more impactful parts of this project that's going to take place during open hours, is this water issue on the lower level. The most invasive part of this whole project is the next item, and that relates to the updating and replacing of the electrical mains, feeders, and the branch panels. This is a huge project. Currently, as we know from the Capital Reserve Study, our building is not up to code with the way that the electrical mains are divided. There is no single point of turnoff for the electrical. So in the event of a fire in the building, the fire department would not be able to easily disconnect the power to the building. There are actually a couple ways in which the power still comes into the building that it would need to be cut off at. So what we're trying to do is to get us up to code, and a way that we can do that is by installing a system on the exterior of the building. On the north side, adjacent to where we're doing parking lot pickup, there will be a cabinet into which the electrical main will be fed off of the pole that's kind of adjacent to it. So if you're standing in the parking lot facing the building, you're going to see these power poles kind of in front of you, and that's exactly the area that we're talking about. So in order for us to do this, we're going to have to cut the power to the building. This is the electrical main. So this is, this is a massive undertaking. It is going to take the building out of commission for approximately two weeks because of how invasive this is. Because we won't have any power to the building, we won't have any HVAC, we won't have any lights. Technically, we won't even have a server. The phone system won't be operational. We're going to lose basically the operation of the building. Code will mandate that the building cannot be operational when there is no power to the building, but certainly in the middle of a pandemic with an HVAC system that's not running, it wouldn't be possible for us to operate. So realizing that this is the impact, our construction team and I have been coordinating a plan that will try to consolidate as much of the most impactful work of this project to coincide during the same two-week period as this main shutdown. I'm going to get into the details of this a little bit more, but there's a lot in the packet that I've kind of explained about what I think some of the conditions are related to this. So related to this main replacement, there will be some rerouting of the conduit that goes into the basement. There will be one single turnoff for the electricity in the building, as there should be by code. But a number of our feeder panels, or branch panels rather, around the building will also need to be updated and replaced. And that is going to have kind of a rolling blackout kind of issue in certain parts of the building where HVAC units and lighting are going to be affected. So cumulatively, we're expecting at least two weeks of downtime for the completion of this project, but there may be certain areas of the building that'll still be under construction when we finally do reopen. So just kind of to keep your head around what's happening with all of that. The parking lot paver replacement project that we've talked about previously will be taking place, that's a lot of Ps there, will be, will take place concurrently with this whole project. So we figured that since the building is going to be closed and the parking lot is a really impactful project anyway, we're just going to do those things concurrently. So, but like I said, we've already, we've already talked about that. Concurrent with a lot of the electrical work is also going to be the replacement of our fire alarm system. The fire alarm system is also no longer up to code, and because the square footage of the building that is being impacted by the work that we're doing, it will, it will be required to be updated as part of this project as well. Part of the code issue is that this is not an ADA accessible fire alarm system. It does not have an auditory enunciator. So, meaning there's no verbal command for people to know what to do in the event of a fire or an emergency. So this new system will do that. It will also have a generator backup, which this current one does not. It has a battery backup. So, so that's the fire alarm system. And then the last piece of all of this is an item that's been on our wish list for a long time, and that is the updating and replacement of our security system as well as our access control system. And all of that has electrical components, and there's an economy of scale with all this electrical work. We're able to do all these things concurrently. So that is the scope. You've got a timeline in your packet as well for how this is going to work. The first project is going to be going out for bid here that's relating to the masonry work and the roof. That is going to be going out to bid here beginning on Thursday. We made the announcement in the paper yesterday. It's on our website today. And the bidders will be able to pick up the packets from our construction manager beginning on Thursday for those scopes. You will review that information with a rep from Shales McNutt at our February 16th meeting. So that's the first phase that we're going to have, and you'll be getting a lot more information about this as we move forward. The second phase of this is all of the other work that we've discussed here, primarily all the electrical type work. And that is going to be in bid set two, which is slated to go out to bid in early February. And we will be reviewing the bids for that project beginning on March 16th, at the March meeting. The work itself upon award will begin likely in April. And it will begin with the masonry work on the exterior and the roofing, and then some of the other small electrical work before we get into the basement and start working on the water infiltration project. So before I go into much more, I've been rambling for a bit. I want to give you all a chance to ask any questions that you have about the scopes and about where we're at on this process so far. And then I can talk a little bit more about the August closure and what our mitigation plans are for that.
Anthony, this is Fina. I really appreciate, I mean, Anthony, I don't even think you are, it doesn't even seem you're like reviewing a document. I think you said that all from, from just your knowledge and the time you've really, you know, spent in, in creating such comprehensive documents for us. And they were very easy to read, easy to understand. And, and I really appreciate that because this isn't my, I'm not experienced in a lot of this, you know, bidding and, and especially the roof work, 11 roofs. I mean, I think it's 11 roofs. I just really appreciate the understanding you have and the ability to relay it to us so, so well. I, one thing I'm hearing, I'm in support of the capital work and especially in light of all the, what I'm hearing is that it's going to bring a lot of what we have out of code, you know, updated and into code, and that's a very important thing. And I also, I also understand we have, I appreciate the pricing, the budget, and the reserve fund that we have is certainly enough to cover the planned costs, the budgeted costs for this. So I'm in support of it, and thanks again for your work.
Second that.
Anthony, I have a question. I don't see in either bid package one or two, the water infiltration work. Is that intended to be included in what is described there, or is that going to be handled separately?
The water infiltration project on the lower level is part of the second bid set. And I think the scope of that is still being developed. So if I missed that notation in the information, I'm really sorry for that oversight, but that part will be bid out as part of the second set that's going to be announced in February.
Okay, because I, you know, that's, I have experience dealing with that problem. We put your footing drains into our lower level several years ago, and it did indeed solve those problems. And so, you know, I think that is a good approach to handling it. The one question that may be appropriate to consider is that what we did in addition to the interior water collection system and the footing drains was that we also installed vaulting panels on the exterior of those same walls. And the question is whether that's something that ought to be evaluated. It provides an additional level of protection. It's not 100%, but the two together are substantially beneficial in trying to minimize the return of the problem. Because as you, as you may know, the truth is that water infiltration never stops. The water never goes away. And so the only way that you can do is, the only things that you can do are to impede its flow and then to have a water catch system, which is what the footing drains do. And so, you know, that's an additional element that, that would not add tremendously to the cost, but it's certainly worth evaluating with the engineers to see whether it would be beneficial. You know, because that's, that's a problem which never fully goes away. I do have experience also with the roofing issues and the electrical. I write the licensure exams for the city of Chicago for those professions. And, and that work does need to be coordinated, and grouping the bids in this way is certainly going to be beneficial to getting that work done. The, you know, so I think this is, this is a good approach. I think we can, you know, we can talk further about, you know, about the detail of how to manage the I, I think we can, you know, we can talk further about, you know, about the detail of how to manage the, the infiltration and, and I didn't, as I said, I didn't see it in either package one or two. It may have just been omitted from the language that's there.
Yeah, I, I misspoke a moment ago, Ron. It is in fact part of bid set one, and it is considered part of the masonry because we are doing a bit of concrete cutting. So they're, they're expecting to utilize the same team on the lower level with that project. I don't have a lot of information that I can share with you about the actual solution that has been proposed in terms of what, what you're saying. I think it is exactly as what you're describing though, Ron. What, um, what Joe just described this solution as a belt and suspenders type solution, which I would say is we're, we're both, we're both capturing the water as well as wicking it. So I think, I think what we actually are proposing is along the lines of what you've described, and it is part of bid set one. Jason and/or Joe will both be present at the, um, the meeting on, uh, on February 16th. And we can get into some detail then, if you want to talk a little bit more with them about what the solution is that we've proposed.
Okay. I also write the masonry exams for Chicago. So as I said, I have some experience both with the licensure of these professions and with the fact that we've had to address some of these same problems in our residence.
I'm not surprised you're an expert and, and spoken like someone who's been dealing with water infiltration at home too, I'm sure.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments about the 2021 capital repair project?
Yeah, they just want to say thank you also for bringing on, bringing to our attention Engberg Anderson, because I think that has really helped a lot to figure out the, the most cost effective and efficient way for us to plan our capital planning for the next many, you know, five, 10, 15, 25 years. So that's, that's terrific. And I think that's a real, uh, great addition to what, how we can ensure the, protect the library and, and keep it in great shape.
Thank you. And I, and again, I want to thank you for your support as a board and allowing us to work with the firms that we've selected. I continue to be really impressed with the work that they're providing for us. I met with them again today to talk about some details of the scope. It, it's, it's as if these guys work here. I mean, they care about this building as though it were their own, as if they were resident taxpayers. It's wonderful having them on our side. They're, they're good thinkers. So thank you.
Yeah, because yes, it seems like it's very cost effective how they have laid everything out, which is, which is, which is what we are all about. So.
Okay. I mean, this is, this is a big deal. We got a lot going on here. So this is, this is certainly a time that we can talk about it, but, um, I mean, we, we'll, we're going to get into a lot of the details and we're going to be talking about this project for the next many months. So as soon as I have information and updates that I can share with you about the details, I'll provide that. But for, for now, I think that's kind of, it kind of is what it is until we, until we've got our, our, our contractors on board. So.
Anthony, remind me if you did say that the schedule was on, um, the public website or is that going to be?
Yeah, we have, I mean, there's, there is a schedule that's in your packet. And so that is on the website right now, but we're, we haven't even, we're not even really out to bid at the, at the moment. So until we've got the contractors in, until we know what their availability is, um, we really don't, we don't know the exact dates that things are going to kick off. But again, tentatively, April 1 is when we would quote unquote, break ground on this project with substantial completion by the end of, of September is, is our goal. So this is probably an opportunity for me to talk about the most invasive part of the project. And that is the electrical panel, uh, the main feed replacement and the parking lot papers. So in, in my spiel in the packet, you're going to see that there's about a page or so that I've talked through a number of details related to this aspect of the project. This is going to be the most impactful and this will require the closure of the building because of the electrical going down. The parking lot alone would be pretty disruptive to not have access to the parking lot for two weeks. The book drops are going to be affected by this. So over 80% of our returns currently go through those three book drops in the parking lot right now. We're not going to have access to those. So a couple of steps that we're trying to, to address in an effort to try to meet the demand of our community at this time is to, is to survey a number of options. And I'm exploring a number of different ways that we might be able to provide service through the month of August. The last thing I want to do on the tail end of this pandemic is to close the library again, especially when people are like, I'm vaccinated, everything seems to be fine. Yes, I'm still wearing a mask, but gee, you've been open, you haven't closed again. Why are you closing now? It's not something that I can see or feel or experience. You know, it doesn't make immediate sense to me. So we've got a lot of communication that we're going to need to do about this to prepare the public for this project. But we're also looking at some partnerships in an effort to try to provide services in that short time that we're going to be closed. I think I need to also draw your attention to the fact that we timed this portion of the project to go in August because August is typically the second quietest month of the year for the library after December. Our circulation is lower and our door counts are the lowest in August. Typically, our community likes to go on vacation right before school starts up again. And August is the month where that seems to take place. There is a possibility that a good number of folks in our community will have their vaccinations by then possibly and feel confident about traveling or maybe go to their summer homes. And they may not even be in the community and might not even notice that the library was closed for a couple of weeks. However, we are doing whatever we can to prepare for this and to try to provide service in the interim. The first step that we can do is to look at our partner agencies and to see how they might be able to support us. So I've reached out to our neighboring libraries that share borders with us to see, can we encourage our patrons to come to your library during this time to pick up their holds, assuming that that is convenient and is in compliance with your local guidelines. So that is a step that we're working on right now is that kind of a partnership. The more expansive aspect of this would be for us to relocate the library for a period of a couple of weeks. Now, that's going to be a pretty involved process and I'm not through exploring that option, but to me at this preliminary stage, it feels a little cost prohibitive. So what I'm looking at there at the moment are a number of options. There are two places that we can go. We can look to rent a space. We can find a vacant storefront somewhere in town. We could temporarily relocate library services to this vacant storefront. We would need to do a number of things to that storefront, however, before we could use it as a library. We would be subject to, as it's going to be a public building, a number of codes and permitting that would require us to have certain facilities in place. If it is an empty shell of a building, it will need furnishings. It will need to be equipped to serve as a library. So it will need desks and it will need shelves and, and sorts. It will also need techno, technological and telecom infrastructure. So that would be some build out that would be necessary for us. We also are not going to also, we're not going to have access to the building during this timeframe. So any material or equipment that we bring over for this period of time, whether it's two weeks to a month, is going to have to suffice in service to the community for that period of time. So if we brought books over, for example, we would only be able to use the books that we brought over because the access to the building would not be available during that time. That would all, however, serve as a place where we could receive returns. And we could also distribute holds that come from other libraries through a space like that. So we would be able to sustain some level of services. It's a lot of coordination for a very short period of time, but it's certainly doable. So that would be one aspect would be defined a vacant storefront. And there are a few, and I've talked about this already with the village manager. And I'm looking at some spaces all around town, primarily targeting areas that are, um, you know, might be a little bit cheaper for us to manage. Eden's Plaza would definitely be an area that I would love to consider because it would give us a presence on the west side of the community where we currently really don't have a presence. However, we know that rents in that area are certainly more expensive. We've, we looked at the Joseph A. Bank building over here, um, just across the street from us here by the train tracks. However, we know that parking in that space may not be adequate for us in the meantime. I won't get into a lot of details about logistics, but there are a number of ways that we're approaching this. Another angle that we could take beyond renting a space would be to see, is there a partner agency that might be able to lend us some space in one of their facilities? So I've begun that discussion with the park district as well. I don't have any more information to share with you at this time about this, but this is an open conversation and I'm continuing, continuing to explore it for you. So I wanted to get your feel. If the library were to be closed for two weeks in the month of August this year, what concerns that would you have that you would want me to consider to ensure that we were providing reasonable service to our community during that timeframe? A model that we could certainly use would be to, if we just closed the library, would be to encourage the public to come in, especially during the couple of weeks before we close and stock up kind of like they did, um, last March before we closed the library. We intend, I, this is a piece, and I'm sorry, I'm all over the place here. I asked you a question and I started talking again, but I want to make sure you understand this detail. We are going to try to bypass the electrical main feed during this two week closure so that we can keep the server room powered. We're going to bring in an air conditioning unit to keep it cool. And we're going to keep the server up as part of this. We were exploring trying to expand the, the generator that just wasn't the right project at this time. We'll talk about the generator later. But we will try to power the server. So we'll at least have the ability to do all the remote services that we're continuing to do today during August. Staff will still have the ability to respond to email and to have access to all their, their resources digitally. But the phones at this point are still up in the air. I'm not certain if the phones are going to be able to be answered, but at least we would have those remote services. So what do you think we should be providing to the public during the two weeks that we're going to be closed? What should our priorities be? And what do you think I should be considering?
Well, maybe advanced warning for sure. And perhaps hiring a couple of counselors to send out.
I think public information ahead of when any of these interruptions of service or significant changes in service would occur is critical. And we might even find it helpful to engage some public relations support specifically aimed at how to cope with a service interruption and, and making sure that patrons are well informed about whatever options that we are pursuing. That information would then be available to put up on the website as well so that people who were looking for library services would know whatever it is we determine is feasible and exactly how we're handling it. Also, there will be a need for an explanation of what we're doing to the building that makes it necessary to take such radical steps. Because I think most people will be understanding once they have the information. But that's a lot of information or a lot of work that's going on in a short period of time. I think there will be, be, uh, once it's understood, there will be appreciation of the coordination that's going into it so that we minimize the cumulative impact of these major changes. But the reality is that people, you know, need to have that information in order to know what's going on. They need to have the ability to plan to accommodate to whatever changes we're, we're talking about. I think it's too soon to make any judgments or recommendations about alternate space. We'll need more information about what those options are and what the costs are. But the bottom line is to make sure that we are well prepared to inform people both before and during this, this period of time so that there is a clear understanding and easy availability to the information.
And building on Ron's point, um, if I may add to that, if I'm not muted, I'm not muted. The, uh, as anybody knows, and Ron can speak to this, I know a lot as well, in terms of construction, there's no guarantee that our target dates become the dates that we actually end up closing. The good news, if there is such a thing about COVID and how it's impacted the library is we have gotten very good at having a message to the community and beyond when we're open, when we're closed, where our procedures are. And I think if you haven't already done this, Anthony, to kind of do an assessment at some point in the next month or so over what's working well with messaging, where we might've missed a place to message. So that when we do have more concrete information, we can inform the public about the library not being available physically. And if there are alternative places you have found that, that make economic and, and operational sense. My sense from what you've said is it may, it may not be an operational or financial place to do this, a financially sound place to do it. But again, also because of COVID, if we get the messaging out the right way, I do believe that people will, will have patience because they'll have lived through what they're going through now with their interaction with the library.
Anthony, um, I remember that in the nineties, we had a really big, I think it was when the, um, you know, the addition, the second and third floor addition occurred. And there was a trailer next to the library set up for some of the materials that were, you know, more, you know, more readily, you know, necessary. And then I think a lot went to storage. I asked about the schedule because I think it's best, and I know it's on, you know, our minutes, I'm sorry, on our agenda documents on the website. But, um, I think it's really important to get that proposed schedule on, you know, our, our main, our main website. I mean, um, I think the more notice we give folks, the better, especially since we know now, since our board knows now and you know, now, know now that, you know, we might not know the exact dates, but we know April to possibly August, this would occur. I would also try to partner with some of the village, you know, information resources that they have, messaging resources that they have. Maybe they can also post our information on the village website, on the, well, my recreation center website. A lot of those facilities aren't being used too. Maybe we'd have some ability to use, I, I mean, I'm just, this is kind of being creative, but Centennial has a lot of space that's not being used now. The, the recreation center has space that's not being used now. So maybe some of those alternative, the programming or something, some of those alternative things that maybe can't come beyond site can happen there. Public spaces were used over the summer last year for, I, we really liked the Wilmatt, um, the, those like riddle walks. They were the parks that were at the, I'm sorry, the riddle walks that were at the parks. Sometimes those types of things can be used or parks can be used too. So I'm sure you've talked about this, but getting the schedule on, on the main part of the website rather than in, you know, the documents of the board, I think would be most, most beneficial to the public.
Well, that speaks to what Stuart suggested, that communication is key. I kind of like Fina's idea about a trailer. And growing up, I remember bookmobiles were, um, you know, my source of my library. I don't even know if they have those anymore, but I'm wondering, I, I just think the storefront seems so much work and cost prohibitive. Are bookmobiles ever used anymore or is that a thing of the past? But, um, and I certainly like partnering hopefully with the sister libraries. I think that's, I, I guess I just feel like it's only for two weeks. And as you say, I, I feel like we're really going up, you know, so, um, we want the best of service, but it, hopefully it's only two weeks. And if we have a clear, um, message of what we're doing prior to, to everyone's point and partnering with the live, the local libraries, um, I think we've done our best we can. And it's for safety. I mean, again, that I think is first and foremost, that's patron safety. That to me is, is, has to be a strong message.
I think there is something to keep in mind. First, we won't know the dates until the contracts are awarded. Secondly, these are optimistic forecasts at this stage. It's estimated two weeks at this point, but it may actually become longer. For example, if the weather is bad and they can't do the parking where a parking lot work for a period of several days. Those are things that we have to anticipate could occur and be prepared for it. Bookmobiles do exist, but that's a very expensive option. And nobody rents out a bookmobile. So, um, you know, the, the, that's a challenge. It might be easier to manage an alternate space than a bookmobile. But I think the, I think the main issue though is we need, we need to communicate when we have made enough. when we have made enough progress on awarding contracts that we have some input from the contractors about what is feasible for them. I would be very careful about putting out dates until we have a a better forecast of what they're going to be.
And I don't mean specific dates, but I think really, I think it's important to just put a range of a timeframe. We're already planning this. We, we know as a board and it's on, I mean, it's not like it's, it's not able to be changed or specified closer to the timeframe. I really believe that if we know the timeframe and that this is the capital, the capital projects are going to be going on, we, we should let the public know as soon as possible and let the village know as soon as possible.
Right. And we can, and Vina and everybody else, we can do kind of a general message that says late summer at this point for when the library will physically be closed. Cause as we've all, as we all have been discussing, we don't know the actual dates. We know the target dates it will be closed. As part of that, I assume Anthony, this is a question, I assume the answer is we can, we expand someone's checkout timeframe. So that again, if we know it's going to be August and maybe the earliest it might be is August 13th that we close, that we can message for the month prior that people will have four or six or seven weeks to before they would, you know, that they can have that longer period of time to, to have an item out. So that that's another way the live, people can plan for if our messaging is in the right place, anticipate not having physical access to the library and its materials.
Yep, definitely.
Because the book drops won't be available. We won't be able to accept the return of materials.
No, I'm talking about holding stuff, checking stuff out and holding out longer, you know, yeah, but yes.
And remind patrons that there are no late fees. I think that's important too. I don't know, I know we've been doing our best, but that all goes, that messaging goes hand in hand.
But I think Director Austin had already, I think, outlined in terms of, is one of the suggestions, the expansion. But I think when the first phase, I wouldn't start putting the timing of all the things that are going on until we get ready to start first phase. Cause I think people pay attention to what's most immediate and then show what's out different. And then maybe we could have some Zoom meetings to just briefly to do just a PowerPoint or whatever to show what's there and get their reactions to explain it to those that want to come. I don't think we'll be able in the spring to be doing openings. I don't know.
Yeah, probably, but yes, I think we could very much offer the, you know, sessions like that to explain the scope of the work and what the impacts are going to be and so on. Definitely. In terms of everything that we've talked about here this evening, I think, you know, our first priority in terms of communications right now is to talk about reopening. And I really don't want to get, I don't want to get the public messaging, I mean, about this project to cluster around what we're trying to talk about with reopening. I think that's my first priority. So let's focus on that for the next couple of weeks and then we can put, get some general information, create a website that's dedicated to this project and get some of that project information out there so that it's published and start preparing people for it. I agree, we need to get the messaging out there early and get folks prepared for it and to let them know how we're going to be delivering on their investment in the library building.
Very good.
All right. Anything else that you wanted to talk about, about the capital projects before I have an abbreviated director's report? All right, then I will make that transition into my report. Okay, so this is our first meeting as a board since we received word that Library Journal has awarded Willmet Public Library its second five-star rating. Last year, 2019 was our first five-star rating. And before that, we had our very first star rating in 2018 of three stars. Ratings are really, you know, just an opinion, but they're based in some pretty interesting metrics and facts. I always thought we were a five-star library, but getting accolades from, from the leading library journal sure is, sure is a feather in our cap. It really, the credit goes to our community, of course. And there is an article that the Trib wrote about our five-star rating that's included in, at the end of my report. But basically what, what this is, is a measure of our success with the community. Our community is highly engaged and really values the services that we provide. It is true, we are a reading community. We said that earlier. Our patrons have one of the highest per capita circulations in the country. And particularly for digital resources, and that has never been more true than it is during this pandemic. In fact, just this last, this last quarter, some of our platforms, including Canopy, tripled in usage. They're still not ready to take over all of our print circulation, but our community is highly engaged in their early pioneers on all of our digital resources. So in preparation, this, this past year, for knowing that we're going to be through the pandemic, you know, when you approve the budget, that we did allocate more to our digital resources and we continue to invest in those and to make them available. So I wanted to make sure that I shared that detail with you. I did mention earlier that our, our print circulation is up 2%. I don't have metrics like that for my neighbors to compare, but I'm going to tell you, I think that's unusual. When I was telling people earlier this summer that our circulation was down just like seven and eight percent from where it was the year before, I saw a lot of jaws drop on those Zoom calls with my director peers, like how on earth were you able to sustain that? But to see it reverse and, or to rather to, you know, to go forward and to be greater than it was the year prior, I think is really substantial and is certainly a credit to the staff, but definitely a credit to our community and their value for Willmet Public Library. So a couple of details I want to share from my report. You'll see that we've got a new landing page for youth services. We're experimenting with a few tweaks to our website in advance of the, the website renovation and creating a dedicated space for families to go to get all their resources in a single spot. Has gotten pretty good feedback since we've launched it. So that may be a model that we want to use going forward with the new website. So check that out. On the front page of the website right now, you'll also see some highlights of a few other details that are going on. Winter Reading Club is in full swing and we've got some great prizes. Again, this time around for finishers sponsored by the Friends of the Library with gift certificates to the book stall. We have resumed our Take and Make Crafts again this, this session, and we're also doing 3D printing. And speaking of printing, Digital Services is also offering remote printing for the public. So you can send your print jobs to the digital services staff and they'll print out stuff for you. So if you don't have a printer at home, we can certainly provide that service for you. We're also, as we're here in the new year, we're starting to get tax form requests. And we are also printing tax forms for folks. So let us know if we can help you with that. As you see in our, our programming report, we got a lot going on with programming and we've got an awful lot more on deck. It's really exciting. Our usual year-end programs were popular as ever. Really remarkable to think that our musical programs still are drawing hundreds of attendees and they are. So our New Year's Eve, Eve concert was hugely successful, as was one of our other jazz trio concerts that we had this past winter. So it's, it's great that folks are still finding opportunities to engage, even though they're not able to meet inside the library. So as I said earlier, we've got a lot of interlibrary programming that we've been doing. That commenced with a project to participate in hosting Dr. Ibram X. Kendi last fall in November. And that was a project that was spearheaded through the Highland Park Library. Yesterday, I met with a group of directors who were, who all engaged on that project and went together to host Dr. Kendi. We've, we're doing a number of other projects and we're trying to define the scope of how we're going to do that type of work going forward. It's worked really well during the pandemic, but we're not sure how sustainable this is going to be. We certainly didn't budget for these types of projects when we set out this year. So some of those are, speakers are really expensive and would have been cost prohibitive for us to host individually, which is why we were able to get a Zoom license and an agreement with the author so that we could have many more participants. So the Kendi event, for example, that was right before our board meeting in November, that had almost 6,000 people attending. We never would have been able to accomplish something like that here, certainly in person, much less digitally on our own. We wouldn't have been able to afford him. But in any event, we're looking to do more programs like that. Our bent has been typically on EDI initiatives. So that's equity, diversity and inclusion. So we've got two other programs that are in the works that fall into that category. And that is our Long Shadow Documentary Screening and Director Q and A. That's going to be coming up at the end of February, on February 23rd. We'll have more information for that, for you soon about that. And we're also going to be hosting a fireside chat again with Natalie Moore, who's hosting Eve Ewing on March 1st. So we're really excited about that event. We've also got another exciting author event that we're going to be hosting soon. That's going to be part of the same partnership project, but that's not quite ready for announcement. But what is ready for announcement tonight is we have a title and author selected for our One Book Everyone Reads series that's going to be coming up. I don't have, I don't have a date at the moment. Oh yeah, I do. Hold on one second. All right, April 17th, we are going to be hosting Charles Yu. Charles Yu is the author of the National Book Award winning title Interior Chinatown, which is going to be our selection for this year's One Book Everyone Reads. Expect more information about that here soon. It is on your agenda and we're going to be certainly promoting that far more as we move forward. Again, this is an event that is annually hosted by the Friends of the Library and is one of our most popular events. Okay, thank you, Jill. I've just been updated that in fact, it is April 14th, not April 17th, but we got plenty of time to get that right before that time. All right. Okay, what else do I have here for you? Ooh, another author event that we're really excited about. We've got so many author events, we've never had so many. It's exciting. This, this virtual environment actually is making it a lot easier for us to connect with folks with this type of programming. So on February 18th, just a couple of days after our next board meeting, we're going to be hosting author Catherine Grace Katz. And she's going to be discussing her work Daughters of Yalta. We've got a website that's set up for this right now. It's on the front page of our, of our website. Do check it out. We're expecting that to be a really engaging program as well. A couple of other details I wanted to share with you is because there's a financial impact to one of these. We did cut over to a new phone system provider here in December. We are now on Comcast Business Voice for our, our phone service. We were previously with Call One. Call One notified us that they were going to double our rate and we said, no, we're not doing that. So with a lot of coordination with IT manager Fred Wallace, we were able to get this, this project ported over with very little impact. And so we're now on Comcast, but there is going to be a little bit of a double bill there for a while. So you're going to see that double bill from, from Call One, probably on next ones, next month's bills. So just FYI, if it looks like we're spending a little bit more on telephones, that's the reason is that transition period. The last thing I wanted to mention is late last year, we did publish, as I mentioned at our last board meeting, our year in review. This is our new model for our annual report. And, and that's been receiving a lot of likes and comments from our patrons as we've been promoting that around. That's where I'm going to pause my, my review of my report. We're just past eight o'clock. You've been very generous with your time with me this evening. Is there any questions or comments on my report or anything else that I can provide background for? All right, Madam President, would you like to take it from here? You're muted, Lisa.
Oh, I thought. Oh, unmuted, but yeah. Okay, at this point in time, Trustee Barshish, do you have anything regarding the ILA that you'd like to report?
No, nothing at this point.
Okay, and Director Austin Rails, any updates?
Nothing substantive to share at this point. As I mentioned at the top of all of this, Rails is trying to advocate for the vaccinations for us, but that's, that's all I got.
Okay, and there's no, in terms of information items, there's no communication to circulate. President's Day Legislative Meeting, it's February 15th. You've got, let Anthony know if you want to attend. It's going to be virtual for, so for the first time, you don't have to get up on that day and it's always snowing generally. And you can just go and look, roll over and look at it virtually. And it's a good chance to see all the people who support libraries because that tends, they tend to show up. Is there a deadline when you want them to let you know? Anthony, as to when, if they're going, it's February 15th?
I would say by, by February 1st, so by the end of this month, if at all possible. It's a great opportunity. I think they're looking for ways that you can also have breakout rooms to network with your peer trustees. It's also a great way historically for you to touch base with folks who are also elected officials. It's one of my favorite events, so I really encourage you all to take a look at it. ILA is still developing more details about this, but yeah, let me know by the end of the month if you're interested in attending.
And there are three seats and you all can read, I don't need to go over it. There are three seats on the seven-member WPL board that are open and there are six candidates with two incumbents. And that election is in April, April 6th. So. And then finally, you've already gone over one book everybody reads. Is there any new business? Old business? Is there any new business? And I mess this up all the time. I'm on the committee with the village representing the library, who will be doing some programming with the village in a year and a half will be celebrating their Cessna Quintennial. So it's just in the early stages, but where I see the library's role is basically talking about the past, the present, and also looking at the future. And it may fit in well with our strategic plan as to how we might best work with other units of government. And it's mainly a lot of the village has board members. And you've got someone from the Park District and someone from Chamber of Commerce. So I think it's sort of slowly growing. But I know Director Austin will be using his staff to help do programming in conjunction with it. And I think it may be a good opportunity because one of the things in our past strategic plan and what we're also looking forward to is looking at dialogue. You know, in terms of having community members come and talk about different issues. And I think the past is interesting, present is, but the future is also. And so I'll report when there's more to say, but right now it was just an introductory meeting. They have not invited the school district, but they will be. Any other new business? Old business? Is, is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn this very well-run meeting and contribute to a bunch of reasons for all trustees. And by, by Anthony, well, so will.
Is there a second?
A second?
Okay, Trustee Wilka has moved, Trustee Fishman has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We'll see you tomorrow. And the meeting's been adjourned at 8:09 PM. Have a good night, everybody.
You too.
Bye.